No. Dave, did you get a slew of emails for not canceling because of the rain?
I get nothing. That's a good sign. I'll take that.
That's right.
Nothing. I would have been embarrassed to come to work today.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so sorry. That brings us to a public input. Wondering if there's anyone here seeking public input at this time? See, is there anyone in the chat? Let's see. No. Okay, just some names there. Thank you. So that brings us to the PTO update. Allison, how are you? Are you ready?
Yes, thank you. Hi, everyone. We had a great meeting last week, so I'm kind of glad that this meeting was postponed because I didn't really have any updates for you last week. So just a reminder for our budget this year, we're moving forward pretty well. We had a good conservative estimate at the beginning of the school year. So we were able to provide the schools with even extras that they need. Recently, we were able to provide Main Street School with a new marquee, thanks to the Hanaford Helps donation that we're managing for them. So that's exciting. And thank you. I saw the sign on a drive by recently. So that was really thoughtful of your team to put that up, Steve, for fundraising. Looks like my plea for box tops is making an impact. We had a $30 increase since last month's meeting, which is huge, since they're 10 cents a piece. Now we are at about just over $169 for the school year. We'd like to see that increase a lot more, but it's a good, it's a good number. And then the textile bins now we're over 3,600 for this year. So I think people have been cleaning out a lot during COVID, which is great. I've certainly been dropping stuff in there almost on a weekly basis. So it's great that we're raising so much money and the goods that are deposited in those bins are recycled responsibly by the EcoSmith company. So it's a really, really great effort on their part. And we, in addition to the Helps donation, we were also chosen as the Hanaford reusable bag program for January, where every $2.50 reusable bag that was sold, the PTO got $1 back. So we made $31 for that for January, which was great. For the rest of the year, we are planning a gift card calendar for April. It's our way to kind of help support some local businesses and give back to the community members who've been so generous to us over the years, either with donations for teacher appreciation or restaurant nights where they donate profits to us or being Get Fit in May sponsors. So we figured a gift card calendar would be a good way for businesses not to lose money. But when you give a gift card, people tend to spend more than what's on the gift card. So we thought that would be a good way to give back to the community. We're going to be asking the principals to do a mass communication to the community, the school community. For people who own their own businesses, we'd like to start with the Main Street School and Lincoln Street School families. And then we'll branch out from there on social media. We'll also be encouraging our Get Fit in May sponsors who may not be able to donate a monetary donation this year. Sometimes they can give a gift card or a month membership or something like that to whatever their business is. And then we'll let them know that if we don't use it for a Get Fit in May type of raffle during one of our social media pushes, that we'll use it for this calendar. So we're kind of trying a few different approaches. Some other notable updates, we've been working on doing some stuff to the website this year, just giving it a fresher look. And those should be completed within the next month or so. We're just kind of ironing out some details. The next meeting will be on Wednesday, March 10th at 5:30 via Zoom. Where instead of the trivia night that we had talked about, we're actually going to be doing an open house with an overview of what the PTO does. I'm going to put together a PowerPoint slide and then a raffle for newcomers at the end. We're hoping to encourage some new participants for next year and to take over the open positions that we'll have. For Get Fit in May, the virtual race is moving ahead. We're coming together. We're working on registration and sponsorship right now. The T-shirt contest has started for Lincoln Street School 5th graders. And our next meeting is tomorrow for Get Fit in May. So we should have some more updates for the March school board meeting. And then we are still in need of a president for next year. There's been some interest, but no one has come forward to officially say that they're definitely interested. So elections will be in April, our April PTO meeting for both a president and a secretary. And then we also like to get more fundraising volunteers to help with our fundraisers over the course of the school year. So that's it for me. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Allison. Thank you for all of that.
Thanks.
Good luck finding some new recruits for April. I know it's always hard, but they usually come in at the last minute. So.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up is the SAU 16 administrative update. Esther?
Sure. I think Molly, did you want to go over the financials a bit? Or if anyone had any questions for Molly on the financials?
Sure. So included in the board pack, we included two things. We included the typical expense financial, but we also put in a fund balance calculation. So in the expense side, you can see we have $931,914 unencumbered. So we're in a really good, healthy position. But then if you look, because we have the extra revenue for our COVID items, we're actually looking at more of a $1.2 million fund balance at this point in time. So again, we have encumbered what we know. We still have a bit of time. So there's going to be some expenses that we don't. For yet, but I think we're looking pretty good at this point in time. Did anybody have any questions on the expenses?
Molly, I just wanted to ask you where the COVID line sits on that, the sort of the roll up where it has the 1.2 million?
Yeah, so right in the middle, right above tuition, it says COVID supplemental.
Okay, sorry, I just missed that. Okay, thank you. So that's the piece right there. And that's all that we've received.
So that's what we received into the general fund where we had that $200 per student. And then we scrubbed the budget to apply for the additional money after that.
Okay, so the additional is not in there yet?
Are you talking about the Esther money?
Maybe.
We had three sources of money to show up in the grant management system. And one was deposited directly into the operating account. So the one that went to our operating account is the 191-503-31. And that's the one that's going to show up as revenue here for us.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And then the other thing we included, we included any unapproved manifest. So you only had, I think, two or three in your board pack. So if you'd like to make a motion to approve those, you won't have to come in and sign. And we can use the minutes from this meeting to document your approval for the auditors.
Okay. I went ahead and looked at it. Was any of the board members want to make a motion? Otherwise, I will do so. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the manifest as included in our packet.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sarah. So is that all good for you, Molly? Anything else?
We have to vote.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So take a roll call vote. Go ahead.
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Patty?
Aye.
And Dawn's aye. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, great. And we can use those minutes to evidence the approval.
Can I ask a question about the COVID supplemental that we received?
Sure.
So 191,000 and change. Can we, it might be helpful for people to understand what kinds of things we spent that on.
Sure. Steven, Drew, do you want to talk to that?
One of the larger parts of that purchase were buying the technology that allowed us to have one-to-one learning for our remote learning that we engaged in this year. That was probably the largest part of that expense. Other expenses included things like we had rented tents at the beginning of the year to do our outdoor orientation. Personal protective equipment was, I think, part of that as well. Those were some of the major expenses that I recall.
Great. Thank you. I think that's really helpful for people to understand the types of things we needed to use that money for. Thank you.
Okay, so that moves on to Esther. You want to take it from there?
Oh, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ryan because our next item on the agenda is a recommendation for the Main Street School principal nomination.
Thanks, Esther. It's good to see everybody. I appreciate you indulging me for a few minutes to talk about our candidate to you. We had an excellent process, top to bottom, that Esther ran with, with a lot of professionalism. And the depth of it was equal to those that we've run in the past with somebody whose full-time job is dedicated to running searches. So first of all, make sure that we provide those public kudos for Esther and the way she ran it because it really did transpire into having some really selective candidates. So I appreciate all of that work. Knowing it also was a team effort, there were a number of people at Main Street School who participated and who assisted, as well as some members of the senior leadership team here. Certainly, you know, our interim director of human resources, Deb Manso, assistant superintendent, Chris Andruski, several of the other employees here in the SAU office who helped organize or contact or just kind of bounce ideas off of them and get some feedback. All of it very, very well done, and we really appreciate that. We yielded 55 applicants for the single position, many of whom were highly qualified. That was whittled down, as you know, into four candidates that moved on to two candidates. We had those two candidates in our buildings last week on the eighth. My apologies for having missed that day and ensuing two days. But I was in no condition to be around anybody and didn't want you to get the bug I had. So I had ample opportunity to talk with those two candidates and to review their background, plus review all of the feedback and work with Esther on assembling a picture of the person that we would like to move forward. So at this time, I'll let you know that I did speak with the person that we would like to move forward. We've discussed the terms and conditions of a contract. They reviewed a draft contract that we've already worked out with HR. The individual has agreed that that is a contract that they would like to pursue. We would like to offer up as our nomination for the principal of Main Street School beginning July 1st, Tanya Neve, who will be relocating her family from Glendale, Arizona. It's a rather big move for her and her family. I think it's a very sizable shift in their lives. But they're committed based on a lot of the feedback that you provided them on questions. Tanya asked a ton of questions, but I think she had this feeling of of welcomeness, of really seeing a caring community, a community that truly supports education, does what it needs to do on behalf of kids. As you all saw, that's her. So she feels she fits very well. She, as you know, spent a few extra days looking at the area. So she was very thorough in her search, having talked about relocating for a new principal's position, starting three or four years ago with her family. And so we're excited to offer this candidate to you. And I would be looking for a motion to accept at this time.
Any of the board members like to make a motion?
I can make the motion. I'll make a motion to accept the nomination for the candidate for the next principal of Main Street School and Exeter Developmental Preschool.
Do you have a second?
I'll second Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. So I think we need to do a roll call vote.
Before we take a vote, can I just really quickly say too, and I think Dr. Ryan did a good job of, you know, thanking the SAU staff. We did an amazing job. But I'd also, I think we'd be remiss to not thank Steve Adler in particular because this was, this is in some ways a difficult job to walk into because you're trying to fill big shoes, so to speak. But it's also a place that's in, it's a school system that's in a really good place. And, you know, certainly Steve's leadership, as well as, you know, people on the board and a lot of people that are on this call and others, you know, have made that the case. And I'm glad that Tanya saw that and took the time to really investigate that. And so I think that's really exciting that she's excited about coming here.
Thank you for those comments, Patrick. Much appreciated.
Yes, and I'll just echo that in both areas. Steve, with how much we're going to miss you, but how much we've enjoyed working with you. And Esther, for the wonderful job that you did setting up. I served on that committee. And it was very well-run and organized and lots of information for us to take in and share. It was a really great process. I feel really good about the candidates that moved forward, and Tanya in particular. So I think it's going to be a really great move for this Exeter school system with Tanya coming on board. So I'm glad she's excited about it. So with that, should we take a roll call vote? Patrick?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Patty?
Aye.
And Dawn, aye?
Excellent. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. She's super excited to begin reaching out. She wanted to start reaching out to Steve and the staff last week. We told her to pump the brakes. Let's get a board approval first. We're excited. We're going to give her a phone call in a little bit, let her know the great news. And we'll have the contract signed within the next day or two. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Thank you for being here.
And just a quick thank you again to all the parents in the community and staff that gave input and attended those meetings. That was very, very helpful because as you know, it was a tough decision. We had two strong candidates. But thank you for spending that time in those meetings. It's very helpful when we get feedback from the staff and the parents. So thank you for that. Onto the board report that was included in your packet. We've gone back to this format that relates to the superintendent's goals and then added other information in there. Not sure if you have any questions on that. I'm not going to go through the whole thing. I just would like to highlight a couple items, particularly as you can see, the DEIJ work that the committee, the SAU, as well as, I just want to give kudos to Exeter because they really started this work. And I think started to drive our other districts doing it and everyone taking this as a priority. So if you haven't looked at that section, take a look at it. Some really great things are happening and some great things in curriculum, et cetera. So it's, things are moving, which is so exciting for all of us. Competitor-based learning, those report cards went out. We got Chris Andruski, kudos to him's team. And in particular, I know the curriculum coordinators, particularly Julie and Carla for Exeter, have done a lot of work around this ALMA reporting. As you may remember, Chris and I did kind of follow-up meetings in every district last year after it went out, took that input. And then Chris worked with ALMA along with the curriculum coordinators since the summer, trying to revamp that and take that information and turn it around. So hopefully, the feedback I know this time was much more positive. I think maybe he got just two emails, and I can tell you that we got many more last year when it went out. So people are still adapting for sure. But it was really a lot of positive feedback this time. So we're hopeful, again, taking feedback from people and always, always revising to make that the best reporting system for parents to get information about their students. But kudos on that movement there and all of those, all the work that those folks have done. And then the teachers for really, I think, kind of putting their heart and soul into that reporting system. Because as we know, we continue to roll that forward for grade three students. And so for those teachers in particular, it was another new experience. And especially during these times, new experiences sometimes even more challenging. So congratulations to all the teachers for adapting and pushing that out and really working through that because I know some of that was a new experience. Safety and security, I think.
Ari, Esther, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I looked at all the links that you sent, and I was wondering if, well, it's like, first of all, wonderful to have feedback from families that's positive. It means they're understanding the reports, which is the goal of the process. I was wondering, since I don't have a child who's getting an ALMA report, if there was a way to see what that reporting looked like now? Because I know there was a lot of language that was going to get changed. And you and I had worked closely. I'd be interested to see it if the board could see what that looks like. It is a big transition.
I can have, I can have Chris send a link to everybody or send a link to me, and I'll send it out to the board so we can see it. And you guys, if you want to.
Yeah, that'd be great.
You know, just you can let me know. But yeah, I'll make a note to have the links sent out so you can see a sample report card.
Perfect. Wonderful. Thank you.
Sure. Student services, our school counselors, as you may have noted, are working closely. We did, I did write some grant funding to bring her in. I think it's for four or five sessions, actually. Working with strategies, they can work with parents on students and children that have anxiety. As we know, probably anxiety's increased due to the pandemic. So trying to get ahead of that and support parents now and over the summer, as well as return to fall. So they had their first session, and the school counselors that I talked to said it was excellent. Lynn Lyons, you may be familiar with, she's on MUR. Oftentimes in the morning, that's where I see her. But she has very good strategies and rapport around these kinds of items. And so our school counselors are getting that additional training to support students. Other than that, I don't think there's anything, I feel the great need to highlight. I don't know if anyone else has any questions on other parts of that report. All right. And my last thing I'd like to speak to is a COVID update as the board has asked me to put that on each agenda. So right now, we were anticipating that CDC would push out new guidelines, which they did. It did not change the six feet for us. It did add a matrix in. And as you know, we continue to have low transmission rate in our schools. However, our community is still substantial across the state. And so according to that matrix, we're doing exactly what we're supposed to do, bringing kids in as much as possible while respecting the masking and the six-feet social distancing. So we will continue in that vein. What we are working on is plans to offer additional opportunities, hopefully even maybe starting as early as after April break, meaning after-school programming, et cetera. Some ideas, as well as beefing up the summer programming. And we actually have a meeting, I think it's on Friday. Give me a thumbs up if I have that right in my brain. Guys that we're meeting with administrators to kind of go over ideas on how to expand summer programming for our kids. And again, maybe even starting some of those enrichment activities, et cetera, after school. There already is an intervention program after school that is offered. And so now we're thinking perhaps we should offer some more social, emotional kinds of enrichment activities as the weather gets nicer. We can maybe do some things outside the spring. So that's in the works. We will continue to plan and move forward. Most certainly, as teachers get vaccinated, that's, you know, a priority for us. We continue to lobby as a larger organization with the New Hampshire School Administrators Association with the governor to move teachers up from 2A to 1B. Thus far, we have not been successful in that. But certainly, as I'm speaking to you as parents and board members, feel free to contact your reps and/or your governor and say why you feel that might be important in helping us return to school in full quicker. We're anticipating, given the timeline that we. As far as bringing more kids back in earlier. So we're evaluating that every day. We're consistently working with our consulting physician, who has also had personal conversations with Dr. Chan, who works for the state, is the state. He does, I can't even think, Eppud. Help me out. Thank you. I was getting stuck there, Patrick. You know, she's, she's also lobbying for the vaccinations, et cetera. So we're in constant contact with her and her connections on the medical side. So we're in the works. We hear the frustration, obviously, from parents about wanting to return every day, full days. We're coming up and trying to develop all different kinds of creative ways to maybe increase opportunities as well as we can, while still respecting that six-feet distance and the spacing issues really for us without the teachers being vaccinated. So that's really my update right now. Know that we have been meeting, we plan to meet usually weekly right now, trying. that's really my update right now. Know that we have been meeting, we plan to meet usually weekly right now, trying to develop different plans. Certainly the return to school in the fall. We anticipate teachers will be vaccinated. That may, that may change those CDC guidelines to put us down to that three feet in masking. And obviously, that would enhance and allow us to bring all of our kids back full days. So that's really our goal, that we'll continue to, like I said, keep an eye on CDC guidelines as well as what we hear from our Dr. Donson, our consulting physician. I think it's, if you have questions, Dr. Ryan does send out a weekly email that usually has very nice updates about our numbers, etc. In that, if you're not getting that email on a weekly basis, please email me or Dr. Ryan and let's check out, maybe the email address is not working or it's not correct. But if you have questions, that is a great place to get update, updated, accurate information. And like I said, if you don't have access to that, please let me know. And we will make sure that you have access to that. Or if you have a friend who doesn't appear, feel free to forward that to a community member that may not be getting it because they're not on the parent mass messaging system. Sarah, you had a question?
I had a question, thanks, about the summer planning. As you were talking about, you know, enhancements. And I know we've always been able to help with intervention. I wonder, because there might be higher need if with this, well, the money we have in our budget, if we could include busing for some children. Because I would imagine, I know that's a huge expense. But I think about the summer, parents who are finally, hopefully getting back to work. And, you know, they won't have the flexibility that they might otherwise have for busing. So I just put that out there as a thought because typically I don't think we offer busing for the summer program.
We don't, Sarah. And to that point, that is absolutely on the list. It's one way to enhance is to offer transportation along with partnering with Great Bay. So you know, trying to expand that timeframe. So maybe parents, they can't just do an hour, but they could do a, after, you know, a noon time pickup if they wanted to. So we're really trying to get creative and flexible around getting even up to double of the amount of students that we normally do in the summer. We, I think we normally do, and looking at DNR on 100, we're looking at closer to 200 probably this summer. So trying to double that by offering things like that.
And would both school buildings typically be used for summer? I feel like sometimes it's just one, no both. Maybe that was just because the kindergarten's being built, that we shifted one year. Okay. That's great.
Any other comments or questions on the COVID update?
I have a question about COVID updates. Is it possible, and I guess I may or may not be getting the COVID update newsletter because I, it doesn't ring a bell. So I'll have to check my email. I get a lot of emails, so I might have missed it. But I don't know if it's already included on there or if it's possible in the future. Are we able to include the percentage of staff that's been vaccinated, at least one dose or fully vaccinated? I know that's something that some newspapers are tracking now on a daily basis and we don't need to track and we don't need to publish it on a daily basis, but a periodic basis, I think that would be useful information. You know, either as a positive indication that we're making progress, or if things are really slow, that might be a sign to parents about, hey, get out there and talk to legislators, put some pressure on it, whatever, if you, if you think this is important.
Sure. I will definitely pass that along to Dr. Ryan because I don't think that's, to my knowledge, I don't recall that being in any of the letters.
But that's information we would end up getting, right? We would end up finding out if people have been vaccinated.
I'm not sure because of HIPAA. I don't, that's what I'm, I think why we don't report out. It would have to be a volunteer basis for staff to report to us that they've been vaccinated. So we could give a volunteer response, but it might not be accurate because some people might not want to share that private information.
Okay. Yeah, that's interesting. That makes sense too. So maybe, maybe we can't report that. I think, I think if, if, well, maybe it's too problematic. That's a good point. If it, I just, anyhow, I said what I was going to say in terms of how it could potentially be used as a way to sort of help our school system, but I, I get the privacy issue too.
Yeah, I'm just not sure how accurate, but we could preface that with that. This is the percentage of volunteers to share with us, you know, and it could be a matrix. So, so I will certainly bring it to the senior leadership team and see. Sometimes when we talk it through, we come up with a better plan with more heads than just mine thinking for sure. So Molly, don't we forget that tomorrow.
I actually have a comment. I've noticed in the more recent communications that Dr. Ryan sends out about COVID. He's, you guys have done a good job of more simplifying the information for the general reader. These are terms that you guys talk in every day and you talk with specialists and it's not, even as a school board member, it's overwhelming. Some of the language and you're asked to look at data. And so I've appreciated that I've, and I've definitely taken note, at least in the last couple of communications. I think it's really important because I've seen it unfold in the last couple of days on social media. And I'm sure this is where some of, I can tell some of your energy is coming from. Maybe create a visual about, like, people think that there's this swell or this ground swell of information that's coming out of the CDC that's new information. And in fact, it's really not. There's not this new compelling data that says our kids should be back in school five days a week, 100% capacity. And I think it's important to spell that out in some kind of a visual. This is what was, you know, two months ago, and this is the updates in contrast. And when people say schools are open, I think we fall under the category of schools being open.
We do.
And we just happen to be, as well as I would say 90%, at least in New Hampshire, in the hybrid scenario. And people, people are talking like, well, we're not open because we're not open five days a week, full cat capacity. So I just think, I appreciate and commend the effort to talk, speak in a language that communicates in more simple terms because I know that sometimes that's probably a little frustrating, but it is helpful. But also to spell out some of that stuff and repetition helps. I'm, that's just my input, looking from afar and watching things unfold. And, you know, I think you guys are doing a great job. So thank you so much.
Sure. I will, I took those notes down and I'm glad Molly's on this call too, because that's something we can bring up. We meet once a week on Wednesdays as a senior leadership team. So we can give that feedback and talk that through, maybe how to make that a visual. You know, instead of language laden, sometimes that does help. I think that's a great idea, Patty. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I had another sort of follow-up with Patty. I think there's been a lot of talk online with parents who are obviously wondering what the fall will bring. And, and I think Patty's referencing that about different, you know, changes perhaps in CDC guideline. One of the pieces that I see posted office often is, when will we know? And I know there's so many moving pieces, but I wonder if the administration has a timeline in mind about what the scenarios might be. For example, would remote even be offered at all next year? Would we likely continue in hybrid if the CDC changes to a three-foot and we could have all of our children? Does that mean we won't offer remote? If we had some timeline about the decision-making, I think that would inform parents about their choices and setting their expectation for the fall. And I don't even know that it has to have all the answers, but if there's, you know, here are the scenarios that we have now. This is what will change. Eventually, you know, the remote option won't be there. You know, when we first started, we talked about Relax for everybody. Now it's a very comprehensive remote program for children. So I would offer that up as a question to think about. I think that would really support the parents, you know, going along with what Patty said about kind of making it as clear as we can because I just think there's a lot of concern and unrest.
I put it on the note list to talk about tomorrow, Sarah.
Thank you.
I'm sure we can come up with something, you know, again, it's pretty nebulous sometimes because it, there's like seven scenarios, right? But maybe we need to lay out seven scenarios just in like a flow chart. I'm not sure. I'm just, and that, and please, I'm recording this for a purpose. I'm not saying that there's going to be a flow chart in a week of the scenarios. What I'm saying is that's just an idea that I need to talk through with SLT and our administrators and to develop something that you think would be helpful on those lines, Sarah. So I thank you for that idea.
And I think the piece about it for our schools is that we are one of the bigger, maybe the biggest, right, elementary school in SAU 16. So that certainly impacts the decision by our principals, our administration. We don't have the flexibility to bring back as many kids at once, given our space and our size as Brentwood does. And so that's a limitation we have. And I think it, I think that that's a piece that parents, when they look at the different towns, don't always include that as part of their analysis. And I'd like to be able to, to share that so they feel educated. All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing those thoughts, guys. I appreciate it. Any, any future thinking is always helpful for us, you know, to get different perspectives and different ideas is always really helpful. Can I switch gears? Are we good? Yes, okay. The last thing I have is Rusty Lister, maintenance manager, director, did give me a couple of quotes way back, I want to say this summer, right, Molly? About a couple of things he was concerned about, and I know Steve was concerned about them too at Main Street School. There are about 30 to 30 through dead trees or dying trees on the backside of Main Street School that are becoming more and more of a safety concern for us with winds and snow and all kinds of things. As, and also the fence isn't there. They would like to extend that fence for safety reasons on the backside. And if I can share my screen, because some of you might not know the area I'm talking about, it's this area here. And I have more pictures, but I can't, I have to go out and come back. So let me do that. So you can see some of these trees are of concern for safety. And again, this was taken earlier, obviously, but here's a great, a close-up example of some of the trees that are mixed in there. So the quotes total about $12,000, about $5,000 for the fence and about $7,000 for the tree removal. I'm just letting the board know, we would like to move forward with using some of our funds in our operating account to address that. They do have to do that. It would close down that area. So they would like to do that over vacation, the trees, etc. And I'm not sure if it's this vacation or April vacation. I don't know, Molly, if you know. I'm trying to find where my stop sharing button is. Here we are.
I don't, I don't know the timing of it just yet. Sorry, my kids are screaming.
That's okay. So I just wanted to know if the board, I don't necessarily need approval because it is a maintenance cost, but if there was any grave concerns in doing that or just some feedback on moving forward with that, that we had waited this summer because we weren't sure how expense, you know, the COVID expenses would go. So we had put it off. Our budget is in, in really good shape with that Esther money and the supplemental funds that came in. So we had planned on doing this, but we had kind of held off because we wanted to make sure that other expenses didn't come up that we weren't planning on due to the pandemic. But we feel confident that this about $12,000 would be okay to expend now. Just looking for some feedback as to if people think that we should continue to wait until further in the spring and see how our balance is, or if people are okay with me moving forward with telling Rusty to move forward and booking those.
I guess I just want to ask from, for me, I know we haven't had a facilities meeting in quite some time. So it could maybe be helpful if, if it was talked through, through that committee, even if it was just through email or whatnot. So at least a couple of us knew that this was in the works or whatever, if we wanted to bring it up at a meeting. I don't, I don't, I don't ever usually have any issues with safety concerns or things that needed to be taken care of.
Sure, I can do a separate facilities. Is that, it's Patrick and Dawn, am I right about that? Am I remembering that right?
Yeah. I mean, what do you, what do you think, Patrick? I mean, I don't know if there's other things. We've talked about other things in the past. I know the fence out in front at Lincoln Street School is a mess. We talked about it at the end of last year. So I guess if, at any rate, we should probably get a meeting on the books, even if it's not just related to this issue. I feel like there's a few more things that maybe we should plan for or think through for in the coming months as vacations and schools basically out, if you will, it's going to come sooner rather than later. Patrick, you have thoughts on that or?
Well, I just, I, I agree generally. I mean, I think it's, so I found it really helpful when a bunch of people weigh in, but those meetings are great because you can sort of dig in for, you know, 30 minutes, 40 minutes if needed, just in kind of brainstorm on all kinds of different possibilities. And we usually end up kind of with the same direction, but sometimes we shift. Sometimes we decide to wait. Sometimes we decide to, I don't know, come up with a new idea. So I, I think that's a prudent thing to do is to throw it to the facility subcommittee and then come back to the board. Unless there's, unless Esther's telling us, and Esther, you should speak up. If it's something that you don't feel could wait, then of course, we don't want to do anything that's going to be putting people in jeopardy, you know, particularly from a safety concern.
If I could just jump in.
I would like to defer to Steve as I think he has a better handle on that for safety implementations as far as, is it immediate or can we, do we have time to have a meeting, etc. So Steve?
The immediacy would be the removal of all the trees. That area is now being used for cars going around the back for dismissal and arrival. So I, I mean, the fence is not, is not immediate. But I would ask Rusty to set up as quickly as possible, any trees that are putting, because we now are using that area for our dismissal process. So we do have cars going around. So I would just ask for immediacy with the tree removal.
And let me just, I assume weather and snow and ice is probably not helpful with those trees if they're in a bad state. So is it something that he thinks the E they could do over February vacation? Are you not sure?
I know Molly met with him today or yesterday on this, but I don't know that he had a timeline. Did he, Molly?
No, I don't think he had a timeline. He was just getting some updating quotes since the quotes that we had were from the summer. So he was really checking on that today.
Okay, I guess, are there other board members who have questions or concerns or with, with sort of safety requirement? Are we okay to just say, go ahead, Rusty, and especially get the trees out of there? Does anybody else want to weigh in or?
I would much rather take care of it proactively than wait to have more parking being taken up by having to clean up a mess in, in the future. So I would definitely be in support of taking care of it sooner than later.
Sarah, do you want to add anything?
I just think it's an important thing to take care of for safety and we should do it soon.
All right. So it sounds like I'll have Rusty move forward with the tree removal and set up a facilities meeting to talk about fences and other items that might have been on people's minds. Yes?
Great.
All right, thank you. I'm all done. Thank you for that conversation.
Esther, I'm sorry, before you, you just said you're all done, but there's one other thing that I think you're probably in the best position to give an update about this. Can you give an, an update about the forthcoming board elections? How many people are running? Who's running? Remind folks at home about the date and time of those.
Yes, there's two board seats that are up for the running and the folks running for those are Patty, Saret, and Deb Wheeler Bean, and Devon Skarett. So there's three people running for two seats. The voting for those is on March. I'm looking at my calendar.
Eight, I believe.
I think it's the eighth. Let me just double check. Tuesday, it's on a Tuesday, right? The ninth. So the voting is Tuesday, March 9th, which is why our board meeting, remember from March is the 16th. We talked about that last time, but it's a good time to remind people.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
So is that everything, Patrick? Is that what you're looking for? Get out and vote. All right. I think now I'm done. Thanks.
Okay, so that moves us on to administrative matters with the approval of board minutes. We have two sets of minutes in there from January 12th. One is for the public hearing. And the second is for our regular board meeting. I didn't know if people have had a chance to review those and if anyone wants to make a motion to approve one or both sets of minutes or if there are any corrections. and if anyone wants to make a motion to approve one or both sets of minutes, or if there are any corrections.
I did go over them and I didn't notice any changes that need to happen, but of course, I look for things that I may have said. So I would be willing to make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Thank you, Patty. Do we have a second?
Hi, second.
Thank you, Sarah. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, Patrick.
I, I have to abstain. I wasn't there.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I apologize. That's right. Um, so, okay, so the minutes have been approved. So that brings us to principals' reports, and we should start with Steve Adler, please.
I thank, thank you, Dawn. I guess first I just, I want to just start by recognizing all of you, the board. You know, I, I think one of the pleasures for me is in working in Exeter is you've always been so supportive. You know, people, when I talk about the Exeter Board, I talk about just the level of support we get from all of you and, and the service you give the community. I do want to thank Neil for his service and the work he did, and, and I know we won't be able to see him again. And Patty, I wish you the best of luck with the election and, and thank you for your service, just in case I miss you. I hope, I don't know, but we'll see. And just appreciate all that you do. And, and I do know that a good board makes a big difference for a school system, so thank you. I wanted to mention that Marnie, Marnie Bird has been working with classroom teachers to create a collaborative art project that's focused around the message of Dark, Dr. Martin King. And from a book called, by Peter Hamilton called Say Something, and, and that was look exciting to see the results of that project. This month, we've been recognizing Black History Month. Drew, I'm sure may, will be share more as we come about for the DEIJ Committee. Both, both the Main Street School and Lincoln Street School staff have been using resources that were shared with them and having conversations. And really, it's been exciting to see the work that's taking place around the school. We have been engaged with assessing student growth and learning, using a number of universal assessments, including the PALS Assessment. And the grade one and two teachers have also been completing the I-Ready Assessment as well. Both Renee and Beth have been leading stakeholder group who have been looking at multiple tiers of support and, and they've been working with, I think I blew the title for that, MTSS. The, and working with the consultant, Mary Ann Nies, who has an expertise in reading and really looking at our multi-tiered system of supports for, and really making sure that we can meet the individual needs of students. And I suspect that that will continue to provide some wonderful opportunities for growth for our reading instruction or literacy instruction in both schools, but especially here at Main Street. School lunch program is free to all students. We will continue that till the end of June. And we did have it posted in our marquee. And once we get finished thanking the PTO and, and Hennepinford for the new marquee, we'll put that back up just to share. But we did want to recognize, by the way, I do want to let you know, my office staff were thrilled that it didn't take two people to put up the letters, that you, it actually worked without everything falling apart and without having to use extra pieces of tape to make the letters stay in the marquee. That is the small things sometimes that make people's lives happier. And then lastly, we did have a wellness committee in January twenty-six. Our focus was around food security. And we really talked about some of the barriers that keep families from having access to the school food programs and just how we could reach them better. And certainly, one of the small ways we did that was posting it on the marquee as well as figuring out other ways to make sure our families are aware of the programs for, for food that are available here in, in Exeter. And next, the only other thing is the agenda for the next Wellness Committee is going to be on supporting the Get Fit in May virtual road race, and we're going to really brainstorm. It should be exciting. It's going to be an unusual virtual race. People will be able to have the whole week to do it. For those of us who, who may have slowed down a little bit, a week is going to be really helpful. And we're going to be, it's cool too, because it'll be able to extend to families all over the, all over the country, maybe even over the world. So we could have participants from all over in this virtual five K race, and they do have an ambitious fundraising goal for that. So Drew and I have been working with the PTO and helping Kim Myers, who's put a lot of great time into organizing that event, which is truly probably one of the most enjoyable and fun fundraisers of the year for the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Patty, I mean, sorry, Sarah, did you have a question? I saw your hand up there.
Yeah, I had a question about the Wellness Committee. I know there was a shift to how the or the timeframe for when food was being distributed. It changed to Saturday. Has there been any feedback that that was helpful for families?
The, and Drew, Trump, in my understanding, Jean said that, that Jean Pierce, who's the Food Service Director, the impression I got from her was that families appreciated that change and that it made it easier for them to access it rather than during the week.
And simpler, a simpler schedule, I think, has made it just more accessible for families.
That's great. Thank you.
Yes, I can attest. She, she did say it was easier, and I know that there were some updates made to both the websites at Main Street and Lincoln Street School to sort of push people in the direction of making it a little easier for them to enroll or sign up. And so I think that that work has been helpful. Still just want to kind of publicly say is even if your kids are in school a couple of days a week, they are still eligible to get remote lunches as well for the rest of the week, if that's helpful. They just need to fill out both forms. And I think that's something we can work on a little bit more, just to make sure that, that those who may be having food insecurity feel supported that way. I know the nurses were, were, had a good handle on maybe some of the families who could use some additional assistance with signing up and things like that. So I think they were going to look towards maybe paper forms or things if necessary. But it just sounds like that the sort of little shifts that have been made have been very helpful. So thank you all for making that happen for our families.
And if I could just add on to that, too, one thing that Jean asked us to put out was just a reminder to families who, for Vacation Week, that they can still order the, the remote meals for Vacation Week. So just wanted to make sure that was on the record as well. So folks didn't miss the opportunity to get food during that week when school wouldn't be in session, where the kids ordinarily would get a meal.
Well, that's great. That's really helpful. So I'm not sure are too many of going very far for vacation these days. Home eating meals, so thank you for that. So, okay, that brings you, Drew. You ready for your principal reports, please?
Sure. I have lots of just kind of reminders going out and, and connection and support kind of messages. The first one was just a reminder to help, help families and help our school stay safe. And a reminder about the quarantine guidelines. If folks do travel outside of the state for vacation, that we have the ten-day quarantine or seven plus a negative test rule that we're just reminding folks to remember to take care of our community so we can stay in school as much as possible.
Hold on, Drew. Is that outside of New Hampshire or New England?
I'm sorry, outside of New England. I may have misspoken. Yeah, thank you. Another reminder about our Exeter social workers who are offering parenting support groups. They just had one earlier this week, yesterday, actually. They'll have another one on the seventeenth, two different sessions on the seventeenth of February. And then they'll have a handful in March, April, and May as well. By, I haven't heard about the most recent attendance, but I know that they have had some parents showing up and, and participating and that it's been a really productive conversation. So I'm trying to make sure folks remembered that. Big news in terms of the Get Fit in May race. It's always exciting. Our fifth graders get a chance to design the T-shirt for the Get Fit in May race. So that has recently been distributed to all of our fifth graders and as part of our daily announcements to remind them, whether they're in person or remote, they still have the opportunity to participate and submit a submission, I guess. They are due by March first. And Ms. Nguyen, who was here, I'm not sure if she's still here or not, but she was collecting them. So if you have a fifth grader, have them, submit them to Ms. Nguyen. And let's see, we, both Lincoln Street and Main Street sent out a mid-year programming review to our families. And just to, if there are families that wanted to reverse course, if they were remote, they wanted to have a chance to come, have their children participate in person, or if they were in person and they wanted to switch to remote, we wanted to give an opportunity to revisit that. And I believe, I don't want to speak for Steve, but I, Lincoln Street School had about fourteen families request a, a switch. I think Main Street was pretty comparable to that, ten. All right, so, and for the, we're, I'm spending this week right now just reaching out and put, you know, putting the finer points, the dotting the i's and crossing the t's, making sure I'm communicating with everyone. But for the most part, it looks like we'll most likely be able to accommodate all of those requests, so we're happy about that.
Drew, are those families that want to come back in or want to go out?
Mostly people that wanted to come in. I did have an instance where there was a switch in the other direction.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Let's see, Steve spoke of our SO student, student reader program for this month, but I can just roll into a DEIJ updated. We had a meeting this morning. And the meeting consisted mostly of each of the active groups or subcommittees on the overall DEIJ Committee giving updates on, on what's happening in, in their, in their DEIJ world. And one of the action items that came out of the meeting was to, for Steve and I to sort of coordinate with the Parents Affinity Group, the white caregivers, white ally caregivers, thank you, to coordinate along with the BIPOC affinity group, just to coordinate and sort of provide contacts or dates or times of, of some of the meetings. So people, when they're registering their kids or when they're becoming acquainted with our, our students, they have an immediate network of families that they could reach out to or, or parents that they could reach out to. That most likely won't happen until we get further down the line in, in the fall, once the groups become more established. And I believe the next DEIJ meeting is March sixteenth. And those were the big updates, I'm thinking, Street School right now. Deanna did, I know we talked about summer a little bit, but would you like to give a little summer?
Yeah, sure. So the five of us have been meeting to work on our summer plan just to sort of hash out some ideas and, and put some things into place for our students. So we sent out a survey to parents last week, I think it was, just sort of getting some information in regard to some of the things that we've come up with. So some of the things we've decided to do is that we're going to have, instead of four-week summer school session, we're going to have two, three-week sessions. So we're going to extend it by two more weeks. But people can come for, session one is three weeks and session two is three weeks. It will still be about three days a week, and just in the mornings, students will have three options. So one is sort of like an independent study where we can put them on a, a program that we have, MobiMax or whatever we're using. And parents can just use our platform and support their students wherever they are. The next one is a remote option where we would use remote teachers and groups. So they would meet and then they would also have another platform that they could support their learning. And then the third is an in-person, come to Lincoln Street, come to Main Street School and have real-life teaching in the classroom. And we are talking to Great Bay about figuring out something with them so that kids would come in. They would go to Great Bay and we would pull them for intervention or a support system for reading, math content area. And then they would go back to Great Bay so that parents could sort of have a longer time that their kids would be socializing with other kids, maybe arts and crafts or whatever, go outside and play. So we're trying to work on all aspects for the whole child, and that would be, and that's still something we're talking about with Great Bay. So we are also thinking about extending it from one hundred kids to about two hundred kids. As Esther commented before, we are going to be using two schools. But the survey that went out last week was a fact-finding mission, and we just need to find out what families want or need and so that we can get the staff that we need or whatever to, to just plan on making summer, you know, the best learning environment, but yet fun too for everybody. So those surveys are supposed to be done, I think, by Friday. I think we gave them until like the eighteenth. Because we have to talk to Great Bay and make some decisions before that. So we're still fact-finding, but that's what we're looking at so far. And we do have some other ideas in play that we're going to talk about.
And in terms of staffing, if anybody has any graduating college, or college students or anybody that thinks they might want a job over the summer, we are looking for folks who would be good with children. So send them our way, please.
And it's posted. It's on our website. Right? So if anybody wants to work in the summer, Sarah?
Yana, can you, I caught the, of the three, I caught the second one, remote with teacher, or the third one, most exciting, in-person teaching. What's the, the first one that you described?
So the first one was like an independent study where you can say, I want the supports of our, of our digital platforms to use and I can set them up. We can set them up with a username and password, and parents would just sort of monitor their, their, that tool for them. So they wouldn't want us to intervene. They would just sort of do it on their own as an independent study.
So they would still perhaps have access to Clever, and then they could access the resources at school? Is that?
I don't know about Clever, Drew, because doesn't Clever go by their class? And I don't know about summertime, but we would. If it was MobiMax, I would put them on MobiMax, or Beth would put them on MobiMax, and we would give them their username and password, and then they would just go.
So that would allow kids who, or, you know, anyone, instead of purchasing an app, you could, you could have so- something that a child is familiar with. They could use it independently a little bit and explore an interest.
Right, great. And we also had, like, last year, when we, when we had our summer program, it was all remote. And some people, a lot of people would like, we wish we were in the building, which totally agree. But some people said that they really liked the remote option for the summer because the kids could go to grandma's and still do it, or they could go to their lake house, or they, you know, so they liked that, but they also liked the connection with an adult that was sort of following their progress and giving them direct instruction over Zoom. So that was, so we didn't want to get rid of that option either, because some people like the flexibility of that.
That may have been when Zoom was new.
It'd be interesting to see the survey results and see what people really are interested in for the summer. So, that's all.
That's exciting. Thank you, guys, for brainstorming on new ideas for these kids, because I think it's really helpful. So thank you all. So I guess that brings us to members' reports. I know I want to hear first with facilities and wellness. I think we already touched on both of those, so I think we can move along. The next one listed is Sarah with policy and enhanced learning. If you've met or have any updates on those.
Sure, yes. So, and also, I'm on negotiation with Patrick, just to, that committee didn't meet. So Dr. Ryan is having the Policy Committee start to meet again, starting in March. And we'll get a packet of information soon to go over that. And I think it's about employee handbooks and what's coming up and changes. So I think so much of his time has been dedicated to managing COVID and continues to be, but there needs to be some policy aspects addressed before the school year starts. So that's coming up, and we have quite a few meetings actually for policy before the end of the year. And then Enhanced Learning has not met. And I don't, Drew, is that something that might happen at the end of the year, or is this something for, for September?
I would like to say that, I mean, as the year comes closer to rolling over into next year, I would imagine that we might have some organization meetings in order to get ourselves prepared. meetings in order to get ourselves prepared for next year. I just don't have, I don't have it, I can't guarantee it at this point in time, but I would imagine we probably will.
And the enhanced learning in the past had focused a lot on teacher training and talking about Alma as well as the STEM or STEAM rollout that we had with the new positions and how it would integrate. So I think those are all from the things that we worked on in the prior year are things that are all in action now, which is exciting. So I don't think any, anything got dropped by that. But those are all in process and happening. So those are the reports for my committees.
Thank you, Sarah. So up next is Patrick, also with policy or DEIJ. And I guess we need to add negotiations under his name as well, so we can work on that.
Sure. So Sarah did a good job of capturing what's happening with the policy committee. And we're going to start meeting on a monthly basis, which will be great. And that's always a good SAUI group. In terms of DEIJ, Drew captured a lot of what's happening there. I did want to just highlight two additional things. One is that this board talked about having part two of a training, once we have our new board in place. So I anticipate that at the March meeting, when we formally have the 2021 to 22 board, that will talk about when we can do the training. So hopefully in March or April, but you know, if it has to happen a little bit later, then it happens later, but hopefully sooner than later, so that we can get that in while there's still this spring school year in front of us. The other thing I want to bring up was, and we spent some time talking about this today at the DEIJ meeting, is there's a bill that's being proposed by the House. It has a very catchy name of House Bill 544. So of course, you know, HB 544. But it's, it sounds innocuous in terms of the name, but it's something that the committee had a lot of issues with. And it's a bill, the short analysis is that it's the, the bill defines and prohibits the dissemination of certain divisive concepts related to sex and race in state contracts, grants and training programs. And that includes school systems. So it specifically mentions schools. So there are some concerns about the language that's in the bill, the purpose of the bill. There's in terms of the legislative history, it's been proposed, they had an initial first part of the hearing last Thursday and they're continuing the hearing this Thursday. It's something I'm personally opposed to because I've had a chance to read the bill. I would encourage others to read the bill if they have an opportunity and if they are available to even speak on Thursday or, or make their feelings known one way or the other. One of the things I want to give an example of, one of the reasons that I'm opposed to this bill, there's one of the divisive concepts, as they call it. And if you engage in any sort of divisive concept and you're a contractor, you can be banned from having any contracts with the state, providing any trainings in the future, that sort of thing. So one of the concepts is, that's considered divisive, is when any individual should feel discomfort, guilt, anguish, or any other form of psychological distress on account of his or her race or sex. So if you feel any discomfort or at all through a training program, then that trainer can be banned from participating in the state in the future, which is, which would be antithetical to the sort of trainings that we've participated in. It's a combination of supporting people's journeys and their identities and also challenging them to feel a little bit of healthy discomfort with things. But that is part of the proposed law. There's a number of other things in here. The other thing I'm just going to say briefly about this, that I, that really bothers me about it, I spent six years on the, as the southeastern delegate to the New Hampshire School Board Association, they always talked about local control. And this is a statewide, this doesn't even go through the education committee. This is a statewide initiative that where training programs could be vetted at the state level and we would have no decision-making ability at the local level. We may say, well, we're fine feeling uncomfortable, being challenged, but they would say, nope, you're not allowed to, would violate the law. So I find that, you know, problematic. I think that's something that we want to be able to keep our local control and make our own decisions about these things. So I would encourage you to read it if you get a chance. And Patty, I think, just posted a link about that proposed bill. One last thing I wanted to say, which is not on the agenda, but I know if you're okay with this, Dawn, and O'Neal a lot of times says, it's your time to say, say something else if you want to. I wanted us to spend a minute just to, just to give a nod to Neil. Neil's not here tonight, obviously, but he, he and I has spent six years together on six different boards. Each board is different. Neil's always been an active participant. He reads things. He comes ready with his own ideas to share them. He tries to reach out to parts of the community, ensure those perspectives. And I really appreciate that. And six years is a big commitment. I mean, it's only two terms, if you want to call it that, but it's six years. That's a long time and a lot of service to our community and to our board. And I think we're all better for the fact that Neil was a part of our board. So thanks to Neil. I'm sorry, he's not here tonight to say to him in person, but I wanted to publicly recognize him.
Thank you, Patrick. Yeah, I think normally we have our sort of last board meeting with the, the current members there on voting night. And then, then it's the next board meeting that a new member comes in. Unfortunately, Neil isn't here tonight. So I think I was intending to say a little bit more next month, but I don't know if any others want to say additional things this evening. Sort of last minute, he wasn't able to be here. So I think we were hoping he was going to be here tonight.
Um, I, I think I was saving my sentiments for the final meeting. I think we had gotten short notice that he wasn't going to be here this week, so I kind of pushed it until next month. But as a new board member, I found Neil to be an excellent mentor. He reached out to me immediately and really helped me find my way. I think I came in during a time when the superintendent was gone and we were in flux in a lot of ways. So there wasn't like a lot of support around new members coming in. And that's not to say, Dawn, you weren't, because you and I were in touch outside of school board life a little bit before I decided to join. So but that's really important and I appreciate that about him and I love his global perspective and his steady, slow and steady wins the race attitude. I just think he's he's just a good voice of reason. And I've appreciated over my few years, I'm being part of the board, how we have grown in our communication with each other. Sometimes we've struggled, but I think if I'm talking with other boards, I think we are in communication in a healthy way in, more so than I think some of our other boards within the SAU, if I'm being honest, because I, I get in conversations with other people and and I think that's important. And I think it provides more transparency and and support and initiatives that we're trying to accomplish for our community. So anyway, Neil was a big part of that. I've really enjoyed working with him and he will be missed.
Thank you, Patty. Sarah, you want to, did you want to say something?
Sure. Yes, I would echo what both Patrick and Patty have said already. I think Neil. Echo, stop. You know, Neil, Neil is great reaching out to people and especially at the beginning, when I joined the board and was learning the ways, I think I came to appreciate what Neil brought, certainly around the emotional health of our students, that he always seemed to be thinking about that. He was a big proponent of the social worker and adding the second social worker to the school. And he talked about it a lot. And I think he took a lot of care in his feedback about those positions and to think about the impact of the school. The other piece that I saw Neil was excited about was the Wheelwright Trust and thinking about, you know, working with the, the teachers and students who were interested in, you know, becoming part of the history of the Wheelwright Trust and what it would mean for our school. So I think there are a number of different initiatives, including on the co-op board, you know, Neil was very vocal and I appreciated hearing everything that he had to say and his feedback. And I think he's done a lot for the students and the teachers. And he always is supportive, I think, of the administration, but ask good questions. So he's a thoughtful person and he'll be missed.
Thank you, Sarah. Well, I guess I'll say a little bit more right now and then give him another nod, I guess, next meeting. And when I first met Neil, he was helping to push through our full-day kindergarten. We're certainly very, very passionate about that and helpful and instrumental in getting sort of boots on the ground and reaching out to community members. And not long after that, he became a board member and sort of all of these sort of different initiatives that you all have mentioned separately, that he's always been very, very passionate about. I think that's the thing that I will most remember about him is his passion for, for different things related to these schools and this community and really working really hard to see that those things happen and be supportive and yeah, I mean, so it's, I wish he was here tonight, so I, so that we could say this to him directly. Hopefully he will tune in at our next meeting. Will be, I will have some, hopefully, some, two board members, hopefully one, one remaining one new board member. And we will, you know, I'm not going to say, it's Patty, you're up for election, but I'm not going to say anything. Because I'm hoping you're going to be there next month. That's my plan. So.
Yeah. And I, and I actually happen, I mean, obviously, we all know Deb Wheeler Bean, but I also am in the affinity group with Devin and I know that Exeter will be in excellent hands. Should I not, you know, be on the board again? I hope that I can continue the work because I've grown a lot as a person. And I've enjoyed some of this work and I, and I feel like I'm just getting going, but if that, it doesn't work out, I know Exeter will be in really good hands with any of the candidates that are on the ballot.
Thank you. And I can attest to that. I would say, Patty, I have certainly seen much, much growth in you and in lovely way getting really digging in. And I remember at the beginning, you would say things like, I don't know what's going on, or I don't know, you know, how that works and you know, and you've really, really opened yourself up to learning all aspects, which is what makes a great board member. So thank you for doing all of that. Thank you. Okay, so let's, Patty, that leaves you as the next to speak about whether security and safety, DEIJ, and/or the superintendent evaluation.
Okay, just because Patrick just talked about that House Bill 544, am I getting it right? There is an opportunity for anyone who lives in New Hampshire to actually go on. I believe it's in the link that I just put in the, in the chat and you can oppose it. And that's important to continue to, if you cannot speak or whatever, but I don't think Patrick is clear on that. You can actually just get on a website, click on the date, which is the eighteenth. I think there are instructions. Gosh, I wish I had the exact instructions, but there's a way to oppose that bill electronically, if you cannot physically or personally participate in the opposition. Trying to shut this down now and find where's the safety and security. We met recently and most of the updates was around the vaccination site at the high school. Everything's going very well. They're trucking right along. There's a lot of cooperation between the school itself and the National Guard who are stationed there. What else? The social sentinel still remains one of the most important tools that we're using to monitor student behavior and mental health. I do not know when our next meeting is. Esther, can you help me with that? Sure, I think it's May twenty, I wrote it down, seventh, twenty-seventh. But the Alice training and all of the different drills are still out there and being planned. It is because we're not in school at full capacity, they're just not moving along like they would have in a normal school year. But with all of the many moving parts around COVID, it's amazing that all of these people are still keeping up with all of the standards we had in place before COVID came with all these new standards. So that's been abundantly clear. So another thank you for that. Dawn, I can't, okay, here's, what else am I on? Oh, the superintendent evaluation will be going into a non-public because we need to come up with some information for our next joint school board meeting in early March. And that's it for me.
Thank you. So I guess the next thing on here is the chair's report from Neil and he's not here tonight. So wondering if there is any other old business that needs to be brought up at this time. Okay, seeing none. Is there any new business? Okay.
Dawn, just, just quickly, just to say that since Patty, we're ping-ponging off of each other, she asked about the instructions on how to register your and I just posted that in the chat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Great. That's helpful. Thank you. Okay, so I guess we need to go into non-public. So do we and take a roll call vote to end the meeting now? And then I forget, I forget the procedure for that. I'm sorry.
So we need a motion to go into non-public. And then you can discuss what you're going to discuss in non-public and need a motion to come out of non-public. If you make any decisions or take any, you want to make whatever was decided a public vote in the end of your public session. So for example, if we're discussing a personnel issue, you want to say in the public that you want to make a motion when you come back into public to approve or not approve the personnel request, for example. But that part's done in public when you come back out at the end and then you formally adjourn the public meeting.
Okay, so I thought in the past, we did something like for the camera's perspective, we're going to Patrick, can you do something like that?
Yeah, I mean, so
Okay, so.
What ends up happening is that we go into, if we vote and decide to go into non-public session and we were in the library, then usually the camera person would pack up and leave and we wouldn't we would come out of non-public session, but it wouldn't be for the video. So for purposes of the video, we would say that we're ending the meeting now.
Okay. So Patty, do you want to make a motion to go into non-public?
I will. Motion made.
So I think we just have to say the reasons why.
Yeah, okay. A motion to go into a non-public.
Under R, you want to say RSA nine-one-A?
RSA nine-one-A.
Yeah, I was trying to find the right.
Three, and we're going to go in under, just looking here, A and no, just going to go in under C. We can do a both under C.
Do both under C. Okay, I was trying to find the RSA. Okay. All right. Thank you for that, Esther. Do we have a second? I'll wait a second. Oh, sorry, Sarah, go ahead. Sarah, a second then, please. Okay, all those in favor, roll call vote, Dawn and I. Patty?
I.
Sarah?
Hi.
Patrick?
Hi.
Thank you. So we will go into non-public. Thank you to the rest of us, rest of you for being here. Have a good evening. Stay safe. Be well. Bye. Bye.